The time is 5:35. Uh-oh. Okay, the time is 5:35 PM. I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Present. Thank you. We will begin our meeting this evening with the work of the Administration Committee. We have one resolution for discussion, Resolution 57 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 57, 2025. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, the agreement with the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority to facilitate the construction of the Capital Region Operations and Maintenance Facility and Transfer Center and all associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Farr is joining us via Zoom.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I'm here.
Great. If you wouldn't mind utilizing this microphone here and making sure that it's really close to your mouth so that everybody listening is able to hear you.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay.
All good?
Yes. Did know if the Administration would like to begin with any overview or information on their end regarding Resolution 57?
Only in that this project and various pieces have been before the Council before for land development plans, as you're aware. It's a very large project up on Cameron Street. Through the work of the city with the SRTA and Rapid Transit, part of this is taking over eventually what is currently the Parks Maintenance Building. In conjunction with that, part of this project is building the city a new park maintenance facility on the same large footprint but in a different place it is right now. We are authorized by law to enter into intergovernmental cooperation agreements to help each other with services. This is simply one of those projects that allows the project to keep moving forward. On the back end of this, there will be some technical things that come because there's going to be, as we've talked about before, streets laid. Boundaries will be closed, there'll be a swap of land. So there'll be other documents that will just have to come up for the history of it to be clear where the lines are when we're done. Those can all be, because it's an intergovernmental process, on the back end. You know, you do not want to lock it down to the point that you have to come back again because a line has to move because of some finding in the middle of construction. So we have worked with SRTA to come up with a draft intergovernmental agreement. It requires both the approval of this body, for the city, and for their board. And tonight is simply just a simple overview of that. And I'm sure the folks from SRTA are project manager and Mr. Farr, who runs it, can speak to the details.
Thank you. I'm out, turn the floor over to you and Mr. Farr. I don't know who would like to begin speaking first.
I will take the lead.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, so when we were in front of you last time, there was some discussion among the Council asking for an agreement of this nature to really define all of the steps that are kind of in front of us. And I think, you know, Neil did a great job setting the stage for this conversation, so thank you for that. So, you know, we are moving forward. This is outlining really just those terms of understanding as we move forward. So there'll be some land swaps. You know, initially, the first part of this project is the City Parks and Rec Building. So we are days away from releasing the request for proposals to solicit bids for the construction of that. This is the last step for us to release those bids, so we're moving forward. If you've been down Cameron Street, you can see there's been a lot of activity. Most of those buildings are now demolished. And so we're really setting the stage for our future. And really, this agreement just gets that ball rolling. It's the last sort of hurdle, I think. Well, as Neil said, we have some things in front of us yet, but we're really moving forward now.
Thank you. Do you like to introduce yourself and share anything that you'd like to, about Resolution 57?
Yes, good evening. Name is Bill Schnor with Stantec. Site civil engineer, primarily responsible for the land development plan submission, coordination with the city with regard to approval of the plan. As has been mentioned, we have been before Council a few times. The Parks Maintenance Facility that is scheduled to go out to bid fairly soon has been before Council and approved. And we're really, right now, on the third phase of the land development process, which is the primary Rapid Transit facility. And is an intergovernmental agreement is a critical piece and, as mentioned, was suggested by Council previously.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any questions regarding the resolution. I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may. I'll begin with Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions? God bless you.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No, my questions have been answered previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Not really. This doesn't cost the city any liquid money, right? Like, we don't have to put any cash upfront, right? Or at all. We're just swapping properties, essentially getting a new building.
There is a $300,000 match, which is a very small percentage required for the larger monies that are involved.
All right. Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Good evening, thank you for being here tonight. No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, no further, no questions for me. Thank you all for being here this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones.
No questions.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. With no further discussion, I move to add Resolution 57 of 2025 to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. This concludes the business of the Administration Committee. Next, we have the Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, for discussion.
Thank you, President Bowers. We will be discussing Resolution 62 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you read it into the record, please?
Resolution 62, 2025. A resolution approving the fifth proposed 2025 budget reallocation.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the Administration that would like to present this resolution? And just as they make their way to the front, I would like to note and just say thank you to all the work for Mr. Timothy Brooks, who accepted another position, I believe with the county, so he's no longer with us. So just, he will be sorely missed, especially as we enter budget season, and he was our budget manager. But just want to say thank you to him for all of the work that he did for us and for the city and the residents. His last day was last Tuesday, or excuse me, last Friday. Unfortunately, I didn't find out until after the meeting Tuesday, so I couldn't make the announcement then. But just want to say thank you to him for all the work that he's done.
Yeah, Vice President Green, I will second that motion. And if you think you're gonna miss him, I'm gonna miss him more.
It's all right, you've had time to get acclimated, so now you get to jump right in, right?
Just call it baptism by fire, yes.
Yes. All right, whenever you guys are ready, you can give us an overview of Resolution 62.
Okay, my name is Bob Kennick, Finance Director. And I got my voice, I apologize for this. It's an outburst of the surgery I had a couple weeks ago. So I'm gonna let Brian be my speaker, if that's okay with you guys.
All right, thank you, Bob. Good evening, City Council members, thank you. President Hill, thank you, Vice President Green. Up on the screen, as we lead into this, is the fifth proposed budget reallocation for this year. There's four items on this, and they're described and noted by the involved footnotes. I'll start with footnote B, which pertains to the Parks and Recreation Fund. And what this is, this was communication received directly from staff there in Parks and Rec, to Tim, prior to his departure. And they're anticipating a stronger amount of contribution coming in related to the various events that they manage and oversee. So they're increasing that revenue by $10,000 in the revenue line and then distributing it accordingly by increasing both services and supply line accounts at $5,000 each. So that's the special Parks and Recreation Fund, item B. Item C, and this was another communication that Tim received ahead of his leave, Bureau of Police, from the Special Assistant to the Police Commissioner, they're looking at their overtime line for this year, and it's getting down to a lower amount. So they would like to increase that line by reclassing essentially salaries and wages that are occurring and reclassing $428,000 from regular salaries up to the overtime line. That's item C in the general fund. Footnote C. Footnote D pertains to the general fund as well and involves two items. The first item relates to, an atypical item. We really, very rarely does the city have refund of prior year revenue of this nature, which is coming out of the activity that the Bureau of Codes oversees. So from prior year, there were, there was revenue received related, comprised of both inspection and permit fees revenue. So there's no budget, again, in that line to distribute or disperse prior year revenue. So that's, it's sort of an outlier when it comes to that type of transaction. So the increase there is $39,505.50. And there's a little bit of a building cushion in the event that there might be another occurrence of that that may happen prior to the end of the current year. So it'll cure that negative and also allow $10,000 to remain available if it's needed. The bigger item pertains to, the bigger item pertains to Capital Area Transit, CAT, which, of course, as we just heard, Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority. This was a timing difference. When we were planning the budget in prior year, in November, we took a look at the previous history that the city distributes as local supporting match distribution for SRTA. And at that time, we used an estimate. And then later on, the formalized letter that came to the mayor for committing to what the actual amount was, instead of $376,000, it resulted in an updated amount of $407,000, a little bit more than $407,000. So the shortfall there is what's being asked for that particular line, to increase that line by $31,223. And the city distributes this annual fee on a quarterly basis. They invoice the city on a quarterly basis. And to date, the city has paid the first three quarters. So this is looking forward to the final quarter of 2025. At this point, Vice President Green, I'll stop for the moment, you know, for any comments or questions.
I don't have any at the moment. I'll open up to my colleagues. If you have any questions on Section B, C, or D, I'll start to my far right here with Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions or comments?
No questions.
Councilwoman Davis?
No questions for me either, thank you.
President Hill?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
Good evening again. I just have one for clarification.
Sure.
I believe you said in the Parks and Rec with the $10,000, we're projecting that that's gonna come in? So it's, we're not sure. But if it doesn't, then I think you said something about we'll have some cushion to make that up. Was it in footnote C or D?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the cushion I referred to was footnote D, actually, yes.
Okay, so that will be there just in case that $10,000 or not, doesn't come in or partial of it comes in, correct? No, I just want, that's why I'm clarifying, I'm not sure.
So I'm following you. You started with Parks and Rec, which really, the $10,000 line is, as part of footnote D, is not, that's general fund. It's not Parks and Rec.
Yes, I know that.
Okay.
But the Parks and Rec, it was, you said something about, you used the word cushion, I believe.
That was, okay, I'm sorry to confuse, yeah, the cushion I meant was for footnote D. The $10,000, coincidentally, it's $10,000 as well as you indicate in Parks and Rec. So again, that was based on, the staff member there at Parks and Rec feels strongly that their contribution amount will occur before the end of the year at this level. So they want to balance that increased revenue anticipation by increasing expense lines as well.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, no problem.
That was it for me. Oh, did, you wanted to say something?
That's it.
Okay.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for joining us this evening. Mr. McCutcheon, could you just elaborate a little bit more on the overtime for the police?
I wish I could do it very succinctly and clearly because I wasn't the one that took the input from police on that. But it's not surprising in terms of, you know, the estimate is made for the year back when the budget is prepared. Overtime is always a tough thing to wrangle when, as we get closer to year end. So in this case, they're, they've had it to the point where it's been, it's been hit pretty heavily, you know, coming into the first three quarters of this year. So their senses, they know currently with just $17,000 available, that that should be depleted. So they're just trying to avoid a negative appearing on the overtime line. And they realize that there's a good opportunity, or a good chance that there'll be some budgetary savings in the regular salaries and wages. So it's, so it's sort of, it's, yeah, it's a, related to budgeted positions within that budget unit. But they're trying to be proactive to clean up the overtime line to prevent it from going negative.
Okay, that makes sense. Kind of due to the shortage of the complement of the staff we have, they're gonna have to work more hours. That makes, that makes sense. That's all I have, thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Vice President Green. Can you start from the beginning and do this all? No, I haven't, I have no questions.
Thank you, I believe we're ready for.
I could give it a shot.
I believe we're ready for Section A then.
All right. So I left this one to the end here, but before I move forward, I just want to double check with the city solicitor on footnote A.
So I had to have a conversation before the meeting with the Budget Chair and the Council President that there may be another one coming when we have more specific information. As you know, we have had a three-year window of construction costs with the, with the field over on the stadium. We're getting very close to the end. The projected close of construction was September 30th. We understood as of today, it's running slightly behind. There are some cost overruns, which happens. There was an inspection, I understand, from Major League Baseball or their agent that said one of the items had to be done a little bit differently. So there's a handful of change orders that are coming in, and that will cost a little bit more.
Was that with the railings or something, ADA, I forget?
It had to do with where the location of one restroom was. It was too far away to walk, and they had to put it closer. And once you're doing plumbing, it just costs money. So, but, so the number, they don't have the precise number yet, what it will be. I think Mr. McCutcheon will be able to speak, there's a negative line item right now. This relocation tonight will satisfy that. But the anticipation is there will be one more coming down sometime in the near term. It would be great to say we could have it by next week. I don't think we know that we can have it by next week.
So, just to continue on with this, as you know, this project covers multiple years. And to date, overall, the expenditures got rolling last year. So right now, when you couple that with what's happened so far in 2025, this particular project is right around $12.3 million is the total right now, the total spend. So the negative that's happening pertains to, of course, actual spend and commitments that are out there within the fund. So this $600,000 is being proposed to cure that negative and to also have a little bit of availability in the event that there may be additional related change orders pertaining to the commitments that are already in effect. I was talking with Director, Facilities Director, Dave Baker, on this. And the expectation is for this project to soon be completed within the fall or the late fall. So it's coming to the point where we're able to finalize the anticipated expenses, including any change order amounts that would affect existing commitments. But this is, this is almost like a step one to cure this current negative that's existing at the present time.
Any questions related to Schedule A? I will start to my far left this time with Councilman Jones.
I don't really have any questions regarding this. My question would probably be for Neil. I remember when we first did this with F and B, and there was something that was supposed to be returning to us.
There still is. So we have a RACP grant for up to $6 million, which is a, you know, it's a 50/50 match. We'll plainly have spent everything to get the match. And then that's just a process with the Commonwealth. They assign a third-party entity to be our communication person, entity that oversees these. As far as I know, the reimbursement hasn't started yet. I, from my world, I don't think in terms of government works, it'll be here this year, but you never know. And there's not a budget yet up on the Hill, so I'm not sure they're focusing on reimbursements at the moment.
All right, yeah, that was my question. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss that money.
But we're guaranteed the reimbursement. So the $6 million is coming, it's just, when does it get here?
No further questions?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, President Hill?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, thanks for being here for the explanation of these numbers and documents, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, I don't really have any questions for you all. I do have a request, if we can get an update from the contractors, we're coming to an end, just to come down and kind of explain how things are going, some of that MBE, WBE participation rate, and just a presentation to the public of the project itself and where things stand. I think that's very important to us, I think we asked for it in the beginning, so.
So that would be the construction manager at the firm that we have?
Yes. Thank you.
Alexander.
Yes, Alexander. Excuse me, I seem to have caught a little something. I think that is all for the Budget and Finance Committee. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I look forward to working with you through budget season.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. What is your pleasure for Resolution 62?
I would ask that it move to our next legislative session.
Thank you. Next, we have the business of the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will defer to our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels, to lead discussion.
Thank you. So we'll begin the big business of the Community and Economic Development Committee. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read Resolution 59 hyphen 2025 into the record, please?
Resolution 59, 2025. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final law consolidation and land development plan for the Susquehanna Regional Transportation Authority to facilitate the construction of the Capital Region Operations and Maintenance Facility and Transfer Center, along with associated site and access improvements.
Thank you. Mr. Knight, if you don't mind introducing yourself and giving us a brief background on this resolution.
Sure, Jeffrey Knight, Planning Director with the City of Harrisburg. So this project is for the crux of the SRTA project that Council has heard a little bit about both tonight and in a previous review of the proposal for the Harrisburg, new Harrisburg Parks and Recreational Facility in the block generally bounded by Hur Street, State Street, Cameron Street, and the Harrisburg Cemetery. And so this proposal is kind of that next step of that project, and really kind of the final step, and involves the demolition of the existing buildings that are in the block bounded by Forster Street, North 12th Street, Goodwill Drive, and Cameron Street. It used to have the Goodwill Industries building, was located there, as well as some other uses. And in addition to that, the Harrisburg Parks and Recreational Facility, just to the east of that. And then the vacation of rights-of-way surrounding, in this general area. And then the consolidation of those properties and the construction of a new SRTA operations and maintenance facility. And then the final phase of the whole project will involve the demolition of the existing SRTA operations and maintenance facility. So this is really kind of step two of the larger project. And I think the applicants have provided some visuals in previous meetings and can probably discuss a little bit more. But the facility is going to be all-new construction that consolidates a lot of the staff that they have, spread out in various areas into a single building. There will also be a transfer center constructed between the building and Cameron Street. And as I'll kind of discuss in the conditions of approval a little, we've been working with SRTA and the project team on that aspect of the project because it is necessary to build that as part of this larger project. And that will involve a relocation of the existing transfer center from Market Square out to this location. But the end goal is to have a transfer center that is maybe a little closer to the train station. Now, that's a small part of this, but I did want to mention that upfront so that when we get to the conditions of approval, it makes maybe a little bit more sense. But overall, the proposal, again, is going to modernize their operations, make them more efficient, and allow SRTA to move on with some new projects and new operations that they have in the future that are kind of reliant on this aspect of their facilities. So with that all being said, the Planning Commission has recommended that City Council approve the project with the following conditions. The project must receive approval of the street vacations for portions of Forster Street, Goodwill Drive, and North 12th Street, as well as various other public rights-of-way running through the project site prior to filing the law consolidation and land development plan set with the Dolphin County Recorder of Deeds. And I don't know if that's part of that intergovernmental cooperations agreement to kind of facilitate the vacation and the consolidation of this project site. The applicant must secure approval of a letter of map provision from FEMA so that the development can proceed as proposed and must eventually receive approval from the floodplain administrator for both the structural demolitions on-site, which have been granted, as well as all-new proposed construction, including buildings, fences, and signs. And the project team has been in coordination with FEMA on this particular aspect of the project because it relates to how the site is going to be graded and the elevation at which buildings will eventually be constructed in their relationship to the 100-year floodplain elevation in the Cameron Street corridor. The applicant should coordinate with the city arborists to increase the ecological impact and tree canopy on-site by incorporating native tree species and pollinator plants, particularly along the western edge of the site, around the stormwater retention infrastructure, which can also address localized air pollution created by the Cameron Street and State Street infrastructures. The proposed transfer center component of the project should be considered a temporary accommodation, and the applicant must continue long-range coordination with the city on an alternative location that enhances coordination with the Harrisburg Transportation Center, better accommodates rider origin destination trips, and more closely conforms to the city's comprehensive plan, as well as previous studies developed by PennDOT, including the Harrisburg Transportation Center TOD master plan from December 2017. And finally, the project should install wider sidewalks along the Cameron Street frontage or install a planting strip between the curb and the sidewalk to better protect pedestrians from traffic. The Planning Commission recommends City Council approve the request for the following reasons. The project will expand and modernize SRTA's operations and maintenance facilities, consolidate agency staffing, increase efficiency, and improve their ability to provide services to the region's residents, businesses, and visitors. The project site is a conspicuous location. The project site is a conspicuous location at the intersection of two state routes and the removal of deteriorated and underutilized buildings and replacement of large expanses of impervious surface with vegetation and a modern transit facility building will bring aesthetic improvements not only for passersby, but local residents and workers as well. And finally, through coordination with FEMA, the project will result in a site that is floodplain compliant and more resistant to future flood events in the Paxton Creek corridor.
That's it? Thank you. And for my edification, what's a MAC application?
Pardon me?
What is a MAC application? Or I don't know if I heard it accurately, the application that's submitted to FEMA.
Oh, sorry. It's a letter of map revision, called a LOMAR.
Okay, sorry. I was like, what's a MAC application? Okay. So if the applicant wouldn't mind giving us a little bit of... I mean, we've covered some of this already, but if you'd like to articulate a little bit more, any issues or any concerns you have with this particular resolution, this particular portion of it?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we have been working closely with the city throughout the process on all phases, Mr. Knight. We have reviewed the, excuse me, the case report. We are definitely agreeable to all the conditions that have been outlined as recommended conditions for approval. And yeah, it will be a modern facility. We are working through the permitting process. The one mentioned here, number two, the LOMAR, we've worked closely with FEMA. It's been issued and is now in the public comment period, which is like a four-and-a-half-month process. But then, once it goes through that public comment period, it will become effective at that point. Working with CRW on a number of utility-related issues or items, and along with permitting, and the Conservation Districts and DEP for the NPDS permits. So permits are all proceeding very well, and we're in a good position to move forward.
Thank you. And have you all looked at the... Have you like compared the impervious surface area of what the new prospect would look... What the new project would look like versus what's there now? And will the impervious area be less or more?
Yeah, actually, that is a good point. It is less impervious cover. But in addition to that, and working with CRW and per their request, we have separated all stormwater runoff from the combined sewer system into the separate stormwater system, to the point where the combined sewer overflow in that area, discharge in the Paxton Creek would be able to be eliminated according to CRW.
Thank you. And just to be clear, this is 14 parcels into one?
I believe that is correct number, yes.
And I think that's it for me. I'll start asking my colleagues if you have any questions. Councilman Jones?
No, I really have no questions. But I do want to say, so far, the construction that was down there, I'm interested in the... I don't know if that's some new technology, but that was very... How they knocked down the stuff and then no dust was going anywhere, that was... Where did they get that stuff from?
Yeah, I know there are a couple of critical areas. Obviously, the one building that's right up close to Cameron Street, and they said they had to selectively demolish that wall where they planned to. I'm not quite sure if they done it yet, so that debris doesn't fall into the right-of-way there.
Yeah, I really like how they did that. It didn't just flow into the community, cover people's cars and stuff. I think they did a wonderful job doing that. But it's sad they took down our old hangout spot, that's in Tiny's. No further questions.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Just, I was curious, speaking of the old bar, how was the owner or proprietor compensated once that building went down for the property?
I'm not sure if Rich is still online, but my understanding, it was an equitable sale between both parties.
Okay. Long story short, they were definitely taken care of.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was not eminent domain. It was a sale.
Perfect. That is correct.
Awesome. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. I don't have any questions. Thank you all. Mine been answered with the detailed report.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. President Hill?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Vice President Green?
Thank you, Ms. You. Thank you for being here. I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. One of my questions was answered, and I had asked this question at the last meeting. You were here about the Paxton Creek and the stormwater outfall pipe. So that has all been reconstructed, and you mentioned that's no longer going to be utilized.
The combined sewer overflow pipe? Yes. It, as part of the, all three phases, the stormwater will be separated from that combined sewer overflow pipe. And at the intersection of Cameron Street and the signal there at Goodwill Drive, there's an overflow structure that if the stormwater would flow up, it would overflow through a pipe that discharges in Paxton Creek. That would no longer be needed because of all the stormwaters being separated and put in other stormwater pipe, stormwater separate.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
And you mentioned the transportation center is going to be moved to, I think you mentioned, near the train station or...
So yeah, so as part of this project, the transfer center will be relocated from Market Square to this site. But the long-term goal is to move it closer to the train station so that you have, you can do connections, like take a train, take a bus in to train station. It also puts it a little closer to, you know, the state workers, the hospital, where you're going to probably generate more ridership. The Serta and the project team have been working pretty closely with us on that. It's been more a matter of finding an appropriate location for that and maybe developer willing to incorporate that aspect into their larger project. And as you're probably aware, there's still, you know, vacant lots along the Market Street corridor there where there hasn't been new development proposals. But when they do come in, we intend on working with whomever those entities are to see if they're able to incorporate a transfer center into that part of the project.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That's it from you. Thank you. And this is a very imprecise question, but I didn't pick up on this before. How close is the construction getting to the Harrisburg Cemetery?
None of the proposed construction will be, will impact the cemetery. The property line does adjoin, so the, yeah, at the bottom, the cemetery, there's a large portion of trees and a slope there. And the property, the cemetery property line is down at the toe of the slope, at the bottom of the slope. So the two property lines do adjoin, but the, none of the construction is proposed to be outside the property line or on the cemetery.
Yeah, it can be outside the property.
Correct.
And like, I just, so I'm trying to picture it, like how... Do you have a sense of how close, Mr. Knight?
Well, I would say if you can picture in your mind where the existing Parks and Rec facility is, I don't believe it's intended to go much beyond that. Maybe part of the access drive around the back of the facility, maybe, but there's not going to be any structure like that close to the cemetery property line.
Okay. Well, for full disclosure, I'm a fan of the Harrisburg Cemetery. I think it's a very undervalued resource in...
That's mine.
In Pennsylvania. So maybe something to think about is like a pathway to the cemetery for folks to go on walks as they're coming to and from work. And that's pretty much it for me. Any other questions?
No, there is a hole in the fence that I used to go through.
Yeah, it's a stunning place. Okay, I would recommend that we put Resolution 59 hyphen 2025 into the record, and that's it for your resolution today. Thank you. Did I say that correctly? I meant putting it on the legislative, okay. So the next, if, Mr. Trusdell, if you don't mind reading Resolution 64 hyphen 2025 into the record, please?
Resolution 64, 2025. A resolution approv... A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for 508 and 510 North Second Street, submitted by WCI Partners LP to convert the existing office building into multifamily dwellings and expanded say-in-access improvements.
Thank you. So, Mr. Knight, if you don't mind giving us a little background on this resolution and...
Sure. So this proposal is for two adjoined buildings at 508 and 510 North Second Street. I believe they were previously owned by Wickswenger and Widener, the law firm, which relocated out of there, purchased by the applicant who intends on creating five units in the one building and six in the other building. The proposal does not involve any substantive changes to the outside of the buildings. The properties are located in the old Harrisburg Municipal Historic District, and therefore, if there were any changes, they would need to be approved. But for the most part, this is just an internal configuration of the property. The proposal did require the securing approval of a variance application from the zoning hearing board, which was received. So the current, as far as the current proposal is concerned, city council review of the land development plan is the last step in the application. The applicants, I do not believe, are like consolidating the two parcels into one, so they'll remain as two separate parcels. So it's a fairly straightforward development, similar to many of the others that have occurred downtown, where we have commercial businesses kind of decamping for the suburbs, or maybe just people are starting to do more work from home, and these commercial businesses need less of this space. So we're seeing them be purchased and converted back into the residential uses that they were when they were initially constructed. But instead of being single-family homes, there tend to be apartments now. So it's along those same lines. With that being said, the Planning Commission has recommended the city council approve the request with the following conditions. The applicant must receive zoning hearing board approval of the requisite zoning relief requests submitted concurrently with the land development plan for the proposed conversion and conform to any conditions imposed by that body. And as noted, they did receive that approval. The Planning Commission recommends city council approve the request for the following reasons. The adaptive reuse of vacant and underutilized office spaces into apartment buildings is a long-term trend for the downtown neighborhood. Other conversions of former office buildings in the surrounding neighborhood have demonstrated the proposed use will not adversely impact the character of the neighborhood, and the project will help retain existing architecturally and historically significant buildings endangered not only by the threat of extended vacancy, but by the deteriorating buildings to the north. And that's a reference to 512 and 514 North Second Street, which, if anybody's familiar with those, they've been shuttered and condemned for decades almost now. And they're, they've kind of remarkably been standing, but they're attached to these buildings. So, you know, working on securing these will hopefully help with the eventual redevelopment of those two structures as well. And then finally, the proposed reuse will add new residents to the neighborhood to activate the street on nights and weekends, and grow a customer base to support local businesses, and will provide additional units to the downtown housing inventory.
And what was the variance that was requested?
It was for relief from the density regulations of the zoning code.
And is this building north or south of State Street?
It is north.
Okay. So if the applicant wouldn't mind giving a little introduction about the project and timelines and what your expectations are?
Sure. Thank you for having me. My name is Dave Butcher with WCI Partners. We've been doing real estate development in the city for about 20 years now. This project has, the property is, Jeff had summarized, was an office building for many years. It was the office, it was the headquarters of Wickswenger. They had moved out of the city, and they were selling their building. It's been listed for about six months. We purchased it with the intent to convert it to apartments, and we worked with our apartment to lay out 11 units in both buildings. We'd like to get started if the proposal is approved by council right away. So hopefully, right away means for second week of October, we would pull a demo permit and then get rolling. Project probably take about 12 months.
Thank you. And I think everything else was answered in the materials. So I'll open up for questions. I'll start with Councilman Jones.
No questions at this time.
Okay. Councilman Rodriguez?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
Go on. Thank you. I was just wondering, will you be also the property manager for the building? Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That was it for me.
Thank you. President Hill?
Thank you. I just had a question around affordability of these units. So is that something that you are considering?
So the prices that we're looking at for this building right now are in 1,100 to 1,200 range. They'll all be one bedrooms. I looked online at the current median rent in the city, and it said 1,300. I didn't verify the accuracy of that, but, so we're below the median rent in the city at this particular project. What we sometimes do is look at our total portfolio. So we have about 300 units currently that we developed and managed. And I just looked at the stats with our team. So 36 of those units are below $1,000 a month. So of the 300, 36 are 12%. What we try to do when we're looking at these individual projects is, okay, what is, what are the prices that we need to get the appraised value that'll cover the construction costs? So sometimes on an individual project, the rents, they all need to be at a certain point to get that appraised value to cover what your costs will be. But on other projects, there's room to be flexible with the unit type and the rent type. So what I've encouraged our team to look at, and what we try to look at, and I think it's helpful for many of us to look at, is sometimes a particular project might be unable to carry a certain number of affordable units because of the cost constraints. But the total amount of units that a company has or developed can fit into that depending on the property. Sorry, that's kind of a really wordy answer to your question, but the short answer is, we do have a lot of, we do have a significant percentage of affordable units. The units at this property will be under the median at about 85, 90% under the median.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you for sharing. I think if I did my math correctly, I think it would only be like one or two units. It wouldn't have to be all 11, so I would encourage consideration.
Sure. Yeah, and portfolio-wide, we are in that one to two units on average.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. You're welcome.
Vice President Green?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. So thank you for being here this evening.
Sure.
In your long-term vision, do you foresee yourself also buying the other two properties that are connected, the condemned properties, after you fix these two? And then buying those and fixing those up too, and also renting those out?
So we are, we would love to see the current owner of those proceed with what they received approvals for. So I believe they had received approvals to demolish those structures and redevelop. There's an approved land development plan for those.
Correct. So those structures were approved by Harb for demolition again due to decades of contamination and vacancy. And a redevelopment proposal was approved. I think this was sometime in like 2021, 2022 or so. So it's been a while. I think the property changed hands between that time and the other time, but there is still an active redevelopment plan for those two properties. For that side, I should say. Those two properties are expected to come down with the new construction.
And so we're in communication with that owner, and we are, it's our understanding that the plan to demolish those will be proceeding soon, and we're encouraging that because we would like that demolition activity to occur before we finish and move people in, because it's a lot of noise and dust that would then impact our residents. So we want that to occur while we're doing construction.
That makes sense. And you mentioned... And you mentioned this was advertised for six months prior to you purchasing the property?
About that.
Where did you find it? On what site? Or did you?
Yeah, no, it was, it was one of the commercial real estate sites that we found the property. We just looked at it. They had listed it at a price that just would not make the conversion work. And then, yeah, they lowered the price and it came down.
Does the city have those sites, those properties listed? All of the, you know, properties in the city that are actually, can be bought?
I don't know if you're referencing like a, a link to the MLS or to particular buildings or properties. I don't know if there's anything like that. That might be something in there.
I think this one was NAICIR, one of the local brokers. They have a website, Nicky Properties.
Okay.
There's Landmark, and a, them, and one other one that are the big three. So, there's a list we use.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Any last minute questions? Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and add Resolution 64 hyphen 2025 to the next legislative session. And that concludes the business of this committee today. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Our final committee business this evening lies with the Public Works Committee. I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilwoman Rodriguez, to lead discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Beginning Public Works Committee business, we will read Resolution 53 of 2025. And also, we will be discussing Resolution 61 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution 53 of 2025 into the record?
Resolution 53, 2025. A resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the City of Harrisburg, which have exhausted their useful life for city operations.
Thank you. And I see our city's engineer, if you wouldn't mind speaking into the mic, introducing yourself, your role with the city, and a quick overhaul of Resolution 53 of 25.
Sure. My name is Joel Siders, I'm the city engineer for Harrisburg. The equipment list that we provided with this resolution are, I believe, 16 traffic controllers that are really no, no longer of use to the city. And so, what a traffic controller is, it's, it sits inside our traffic cabinet, and it controls the time.
Could you speak directly into the mic, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes, sir.
So, the, the, the traffic controllers control the, the signal timing and the pedestrian timing of, of the intersection. These select few have been damaged in the field, replaced, and have just been sitting in our shop for, for a while. We did have them repaired as backups, but even after the repairs, they're still unreliable. And we're at the point now, we're just asking to be allowed to get rid of them to make room for more reliable equipment.
All right, seems pretty straightforward. What would you say the value is, the value is per traffic controller?
So, they, they have a rough nominal value, about $2,000 apiece. We can buy new controllers for 2,500 apiece.
Wow, wow, okay. And is that all we're looking forward to doing? Once we sell them off and gain the revenue, we're just looking to buy brand-new traffic controllers? Or would that go to anything else?
It'd be to hopefully purchase other traffic controllers. There's a constant need for them throughout the city.
Absolutely, all right. Thank you for that, and I have no further questions. I'll open it up to my colleagues on council, starting with the far-right Councilwoman Daniels.
No questions, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Davis?
Good evening, Mr. Siders. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. I don't have any questions.
Madam Vice President?
Thank you very much, I don't have any questions.
Madam President?
No questions, thank you.
Councilwoman Rawls?
Good evening, Mr. Siders. I don't have any questions, thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Councilman Jones?
No questions.
Thank you, and I have no questions. So, I move to add Resolution 53 of 2025 onto our next legislative session. And with that, Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution 61 of 2025 into the record, please?
Resolution 61, 2025. A resolution ratifying a professional services agreement with Wallace Montgomery and Associates, LLP, for the purpose of providing engineering and design services for multimodal improvements along Walnut Street.
Awesome, thank you for that. And I see Siders is still with us, and whom else will be joining us?
Good evening, Councilman Rodriguez.
Can you speak a bit closer to the mic?
Good evening, Councilman Rodriguez. My name is Wayne Martin, I am with the engineering firm of Wallace Montgomery.
Good to see you, Wayne, thank you. All right, if either of you gentlemen would like to give a quick overhaul of Resolution 61 of 2025?
Sure. So, just to refresh council's memory on what, what this project is, it's safety improvements and multimodal improvements on the Walnut Street corridor from Front Street to Fourth Street. And we had put this out for proposal earlier this year. We received three proposals. The original firm that had the high, high score on the proposal that we selected, Kimberly Horn, we presented in front of the council and was approved to go forward with them. After we executed the contract, they, they came back and said there was some wording in the contract that their insurance company wouldn't kind of allow. We couldn't come to an agreement, and they respectively withdrew their, their proposal from consideration. So, then luckily, we had a very close number two that we could fall back on, which is Wallace Montgomery. We already have a, a contract with Wallace Montgomery for open-end services, and I can't say enough about them. We're just thrilled to have them onboard. And the reason it'd be a ratification rather than a resolution was that this occurred during council's break over the summer, and to kind of keep the project on schedule, we went ahead and executed the agreement with Wallace Montgomery and are now asking for ratification.
Right, it's understandable. I guess my question would be for legal. Do we have any idea what that language was that made the previous contract be back out? Just for clarification.
Yeah, it had to do with indemnification insurance provisions, which the biggest issue was they waited until after council had approved it, after it was executed, and then wanted to change it, even though it was a public bidding sort of process in the first place.
Gotcha.
Now, we will work with people on the front end. We don't let them come in on the back end and say there's additional terms they want to add. And we basically said, if you want to do that, you can go elsewhere, and they went elsewhere.
Absolutely, all right. All right, well, thank you both. Mr. Martin, is there anything you wanted to add?
Just, just how happy we are to continue building this relationship with the city. Our firm was the lead firm on, you know, Second Street, Seventh Street. We're a subconsulon on Mulder Square. Some, we just finished the design of the Capitol Gateway, the Forester Street. Oh, I shouldn't say just finished, the construction just finished. We finished the design a year ago, but that, that'd be the most recent, you know, major project in the city. We're, we're working on Hur Street now. There's a, a public, public meeting at the Bethesda Mission on, on Saturday, 10, 10 to 12. So, if, if anyone, you want to join me there and Joel, Saturday morning, at the Bethesda Mission on 15th and Hur. So, you know, we, we, we know the city. We've been working in the city for, going on 12 years now, on some major projects. And this one, in, in addition, will be a, you know, a pretty, pretty major project in the city. The highlight would be a raised intersection at the intersection of Second and Walnut, along with the improvements Joel had mentioned, but also resurfacing of those badly needed, you know, corridor. So, with that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Selkowski, is there any way you can turn your ringer off, please? You can't? Okay, all right. Then I, then I ask, yeah, if you don't mind being excused, thank you. All right, so I have no further questions for you guys, but thank you guys both for joining us. And I'll open it up to council, starting to my media left, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Excuse me. Oh, man. Only question I have is regarding a proposed cost or estimated cost? Or do we know the number, or is this the exact number?
For the?
The 276.
It, it actually, I believe it was? It'd actually be the, the, the number right below, 303,000 for design services, with the additional survey included.
Hold on.
Not to exceed.
I don't, yeah, I go straight to the exhibit from here. Yeah, that's the. And were you, is this an exhibit, the number that you're referring to?
It's, it's in their proposal, it should have been attached to the resolution.
Okay, so I'm just looking at the number in the resolution itself. If you go back, go back, go back, go back. Yeah, right here.
Right there.
Yeah. You can see it?
200, yep.
Because I know, I mean, again, I'm just asking because I know with Kimberly and, you know, there was a number there, and, and you said you were pretty close.
So, I think Kimberly Horn was like 282, so they're, they're in the ballpark.
So, just as a point of information, I'm solicitor Grover, would that?
That's my office's error, not putting in.
Would that require an amendment?
No, because the attachment is there. It's incorporated into the document, so both are one in the same document when you get here. But it's on Section 6, subsection 7, page 25. There's an additional add-on to that number for an ad alternate survey, which of, which brings it up to 303, 3509.
And is that, is that something council received, or that hasn't?
Yeah, that's in the exhibit you have.
Okay, okay.
It's right there. It's just, we, frankly, when we, when we did it, we plugged the first number in and didn't go back and plug it in.
Okay, awesome.
But, but it, but it is allocated already.
Yeah, we just ratified it.
Yeah, so you, no, but I'm saying, but the money's already been allocated to do it.
Gotcha.
So, it's not, we're asking for additional money from the budget.
Understood.
Okay, now, I was just looking at the difference.
I got you. That's our fault, I apologize.
All right. Other than that, no questions, and thank you for your continued service working with the city.
Thank you very much. I, I, a little further clarification. So, the additional survey would be to capture any information. So, if there was a scope change, so maybe we're doing a little bit more paving, so we'd have to capture some additional survey points. Or if anything changed, because this had previously been surveyed in 2020, 2020, it had been surveyed. So, if there's any changes out there, we would get new survey. So, that's that additional. We didn't, we weren't sure. We're still working with the engineer to determine whether we need to come back out and do any additional survey. And then that prices and not to exceed, we bill our hourly rate. This is what we anticipate spending, but it's also a not to exceed. So, we'll only bill for the work we do.
Yeah, I remember. I think we got into an agreement with you, with, with your company firm like that already, right?
Right, yes.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, thank you for your continued service with the city.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Our Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Rawls.
Good evening, welcome back, Mr. Martin. But, uh, thank you both for being here, and I don't, I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you, Madam President.
I don't have any questions, nice to see you, Mr. Martin.
Same here, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
I don't have any questions, great to see you, welcome back. You're always welcome back. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Good evening, Mr. Martin, welcome back, and nice to see you this evening.
Good evening, thank you.
No questions, though, thank you.
Hi, thank you, and Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, do either of you gentlemen have anything to add?
No, I will, I will, we do have both an MBE firm and a WB firm on our team.
Amazing.
So, we have 15 and 19% respectively, so.
Thank you for that information. That's something council really, you know, looks for and advocates for, so thank you for that, Mr. Martin.
Yep, thank you.
All right, and with that being said, I'd like to move to add Resolution 61 of 2025 to our next legislative session, and that concludes the work for the Public Works Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes, as the timer notes, to share your comments. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Libby Prophet, and I reside at 2025 Chestnut Street. I just want to thank you guys for showing up, for sure, because there's so much work that needs to get done, and the fact that you're showing up and you're facing, you're in the battle, I'm definitely glad to be on your team, whether I'm this side or that side. There's a few things that I saw about Harrisburg, and one is how we can move forward. Realistically, we should look at what are our goals? I'm thinking, are we meeting the basic needs? Like utilities, food, shelter, and social? When I say social, I mean like dominoes and cars and chess, chess, stuff like that. Because if our children don't have the resources to do positive things, they will end up doing negative things. So, if we're not providing those mediums to them, then we really shouldn't be complaining. And if that is our goal, then we're, we're really behind. Because as Americans, we shouldn't be thinking about our food, shelter, or, or these things. We should be past that. So, let's look at, are we making those needs, right? And I understand we got law enforcement and overtime, but we really need to look at where our money is going. Okay? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone to my left that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, the time is 6:41 PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.